Good evening, welcome to Peoria City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 2nd. Would you please rise, join us in a moment of silence, and then the pledge of allegiance led by Vice Mayor Rivero, assuming he comes back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our law and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Councilmember Ames. Councilmember Patana.
Here.
Sorry, I apologize. Councilmember Carlott, Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Carlott.
Here.
Councilmember Leoni.
Here.
Okay, the first item up is the consent agenda. Those are all items that are listed with a C. They're considered to be routine, have been previously reviewed by the city council. They will be enacted by one motion unless a council member asks for one of the issues to be set aside. Do we have any requests? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ames, second by Mr. Patana. This is the consent agenda, please vote. Clerk will record the vote. Edgina, thank you very much. Next item up is 22R, public hearing, stipulation modification to the Meadows Plan Community District, 91st Avenue and Deer Valley Road. Staff report.
Chris Huckus, our Planning and Community Development Director, will make the staff report on this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to modify a stipulation pertaining to the Meadows Plan Community District and the dedication of an unimproved parkland. To be clear, there are no proposed changes to the entitlement per this request. The scope really is limited to the modification of one of the approved stipulations. So, the Meadows is a planned community of 694 acres, shown in red there. With the exception of the Liberty High School, which is shown within the polygon, it's not part of the planned community. It's generally bounded by Deer Valley Road on the south, Pinnacle Peak on the north, 91st in the east, and roughly Lake Pleasant Parkway on the west. The Meadows Plan Community District was received their zoning entitlement back in 2008. It was entitled for up to 1,508 single-family units for a gross density of 2.17 units per acre. Lot size range in the proposed plan from 5,000 square feet to 24,000 square feet in size. Okay, this graphic illustrates the conceptual development plan for the Meadows. So what's going on today? So if you look at the parcel described in blue, that's parcel four, that's currently under construction, Meritage Homes. The two parcels that are shown in red, parcel 12A and parcel 11, the final plat, you just a few minutes ago approved the final plats for those two parcels, which are going to be developed by K-Hot Mania and Homes. The planned community also includes a number of future private parks and a community center. The community also includes a number of future public facilities, including trails, a 15-acre school site, which is located directly to the east of the park site, and the subject of tonight's item, the park site, the 10 acre park site, which is located internally within the project. This slide illustrates the major components of stipulation 29 that we approved back in 2008. So what this says is that the dedication of the park site would occur at the earlier of the three provisions shown there, when the 1,000th building permit is issued, or when the adjacent school site is dedicated to the school district, or July 1, 2013, yesterday. So the subject of the proposed change really are some modification to the language for the school site and deletion of the July 1, 2013 deadline. And then the second component of the stipulation would be the design and construction of the park site, and that would occur at or before the 1,000th building permit is issued. So in 2008, excuse me, in 2008, when we think back to when this project was entitled, very different environment out there. The pace of development was still pretty frenetic, based on the development projections and absorption rates that were going on at the time. The date of July 1, 2013 seemed reasonable, but shortly after that, as we all know, the economy dropped, and the five years later, the project is now finally gearing up and construction is starting to occur. So from a staff perspective, the July 1 date is not desirable, as the site does not currently enjoy any access, and we would have to incur liability and maintenance and security for the park site. This language identifies the recommended stipulation as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the commission recommended that the July 1, 2013 trigger for the dedication be removed, as again, infrastructure, access, and homes are not yet constructed. They also recommended that the, one of the park dedication triggers for the school be not just dedication of the school, but also include construction of the school as well. And then the third part was an item that was introduced by staff into the stipulation that referred to a few of the parcels within the interior part of the project, and basically this was language that we were requiring the home builder to provide to their property owners, basically disclosure requirement that those facilities might include features like playgrounds, off-leash dog areas, basketball courts, just as they're aware when they move in, the types of facilities that might be part of the park and school facilities. Now since the Planning and Zoning Commission action, I've worked closely with Councilmember Edwards and also the applicant to address some lingering concerns with the stipulation. So what I'm presenting here on the screen and what I've passed out to you tonight are some of the modifications to the language since the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. So, just to describe what those changes are, the dedication of the park site to occur at the earlier of, instead of the thousands unit, the 800th building permit is issued, when the adjacent school site is dedicated to the school district and begins construction. And then, moving back the date, since the project started five years from when it was proposed, let's move back the date simply five years to July 1, 2018. So the earlier of one of those three triggers would be when the park site would be dedicated to the city, and then the design and construction would remain at 1,000 units. So the result, we've got a proposed stipulation that I believe all parties are behind, staff is in agreement, and with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, just for a moment. This is a public hearing, an open public hearing. Would anyone care to comment on the stipulation modification to the Meadows Plan Community District, 91st Avenue and Deer Valley Road? Would any member of the public care to comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Questions? Comments? Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick comment. The development of this project has been going on for quite a long time, and you know, they say in real estate that location, location, location is the most important thing, but I think those people who've lived through the economic downturn might say it's more timing, timing, timing. This started at just a detrimental time, if you will, and now, when I drive by there, Deer Valley, and I see homes, not only homes, but model homes already constructed, and I see construction, you know, about to happen in another couple parcels, you know, it really, it's not only good for this project and good for Peoria, but I think it really signifies that we're moving towards economic health again. So, you know, if it's a bellwether, thank you for that, I appreciate it. I'm sorry that you've had to live through such difficult times, and I'm sorry that it might have given you, you know, kind of a bad taste in your mouth about Peoria, but I hope that you understand that it wasn't just our city, you know, everybody went through it, everybody had to deal with tough times, and I hope that you will see as we come on the, you know, the good side of the economic downturn, the economic upturn, that Peoria is going to be strong again, and so is your development. I think it's a good, healthy place. So I just wanted to thank you for waiting and hope that you don't have any bad taste in your mouth about the city of Peoria itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Mr. Ames?
Yes, if I'm reading this correctly, if those other two things don't happen, the 800th building permit and Peoria Unified School District beginning construction, then it could be 2018 before this is done, is that correct? The earliest of those, it says, right?
That's correct, the earliest of one of those three circumstances.
Okay, so if those other things happen, it'll happen before July 1, 2018.
Correct, that's right.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? Could I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Carlott. This is 22R, stipulation modification to the Meadows Plan Community District, 91st Avenue and Deer Valley Road, please vote. Clerk will record your vote. Edgina, thank you very much. We are now going to consider 23R and 24R together in terms of the conversation and the questions that council may have of the staff, however, we will vote upon them as separate issues. 23R is Contract, Skanska USA Awafria Truck Road Reliever, and 24R is Contract Amendment, EPS Group Incorporated Awafria Truck Road Reliever. You're up.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The project before you had a goal when we first started, and that was to create an alternate truck route that would relieve truck traffic on Beardsley Road and yet provide an opportunity for the aggregate being mined in the river bottom to get to their markets, and we believe that we have an alternative that meets both of those goals. The project itself consists of a new roadway, approximately 1.8 miles in length, extends from 112th Avenue and Rose Garden Lane to approximately 107th and Pinnacle Peak Road. On the exhibit to the right of the slide, it's illustrated by the red and white line. The best way to describe the alignment is that it follows the east bank of the Awafria River. The roadway itself includes one lane each direction with a six-foot wide paved shoulder on each side, and the intersection of the truck route with Pinnacle Peak Road and 107th Avenue will be reconfigured and signalized. This picture is at 112th Avenue looking north towards Rose Garden. This is where, at the south end of the project, the truck route will commence and extend to the north. And this shows a picture of where the truck routes, approximate location of the truck route, when it gets to the bottom of the river. This slide shows a history of the project, not a history of the truck route and truck traffic issue as a whole. That's gone on a little bit longer than the duration of this project. And I'm not going to read all of these items for you, however, there are a few items that, key items that I'd like to point out. In November of 2008, as part of the bond election that was approved by the voters, there was a project included, which provided for the design and construction of this Awafria Truck Road Reliever. In January of 2010, council awarded the design contract for this project. Now, fast forward to the bottom of the slide, in April of 2013, the design for that project was completed, and then in May of 2013, the project was advertised for bid. The reason I pointed that out is because this design process was, is not typical to our standard roadways. This design process took a little, little more than three years to complete, and the reason for that is we had a number of governmental agencies involved with us, as well as other stakeholders. This slide lists those agencies and stakeholders. You can see we had federal, state, and county agencies involved in the project. We also had utility companies, as well as our local stakeholders. We have not had an opportunity yet to talk to the contractor and to develop detailed schedules, so we have very preliminary schedules for you this evening. The first item will be to schedule a public meeting this summer. Our target is August of this year. Construction is anticipated to start this summer also and be completed by spring of 2014. The other part of this code of this project will include working with the city attorney's office to identify any truck traffic codes or any city codes related to truck traffic that need to be updated. We'll work on updating those and then bringing back those back to council for adoption. And the recommendations this evening is to approve item 23R, construction contract to Skanska USA in the amount of approximately $4.2 million, with a construction contingency in the amount of $830,000, and to approve item 24R, a contract amendment to EPS Group for providing construction administration services in the amount of approximately $283,000. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Comments? Ms. Carlott?
First of all, I just have to commend you and staff for working through all of the issues that came up. I mean, all of those organizations that you showed us, that you had to work with, they all had their own agenda, and we had to work with compliance and all kinds of diplomatic things we had to do, and then having to move those utilities at the last minute, that was, that was a nice surprise. So congratulations on a job well done, actually, getting this accomplished, it's a huge feat. I really, truly appreciate it, and I'm sure all of the people who have some relief from this truck traffic appreciate it also. And speaking of those people, why are we having another public meeting? Has something changed since we had all of those other public meetings?
No, ma'am. At the last, at the first public meeting that we had, we said we would have one more right before construction. So the plan is to have the consultant, the contractor, and city staff there to answer questions related to construction activities.
Okay, so people can see how construction.
Absolutely, and any disruptions to the adjacent roadways.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Ames?
Yes, I'm happy to see that we're finally moving into the window for this to happen. A lot of citizens in that part of Peoria will be very happy about this. I do have a question on, you had the budget of 4.2, almost 2, and then you had the contingency. Is that expected to be the maximum through that contingency, or? This isn't a fixed price then, is that correct?
No, the construction contingency is not related to the construction contract. That will be awarded at the $4.1 million. The construction contingency is there to cover any unforeseen conditions that might exist, and any resulting change orders from those unforeseen conditions, and then any changes that the city might require or request during the construction process. So there's.
There's an expectation, though, that we may need to.
There is an expectation, knowing where this roadway is going, that we might experience some unforeseen conditions, yes.
But you're going to watch that carefully, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I have one. This has been, I came on the council in 2001, this was an issue, and it's finally going to be put to bed.
It is.
It's kind of hard to believe. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, first of all, we'll consider 24R, contract, oh, excuse me, 23R, Contract Skanska USA Awafria Truck Road Reliever, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Ms. Carlott. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. Unanimous, thank you very much. And then it's 24R, Contract Amendment, EPS Group Incorporated Awafria Truck Road Reliever, could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Carlott, seconded by Mr. Ames. Please vote. Clerk will record your vote. Thank you very much, unanimous. Next is 25R, Budget Appropriation and Transfer Self-Certification Pilot Program.
Rebecca Zook from our Economic Development Services Department will make the presentation. And this item, of course, was on your study session last week, and council directed it to be brought forward for a budget amendment this week.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, we came forward last Tuesday during the study session and explained our pilot program for self-certification here at Peoria, and at that point, we were directed to move forward with the implementation of a nine-month program to see how that was going to work for us. Toward the end of the presentation, we also discussed potential costs that would be associated with that, and answered a few questions about that at that time. However, this evening, I am coming before you to ask for the budget appropriation, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Comments? Mr. Patana?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a, just a comment that in the purpose, under your council communication, it says, "Self-Certification Pilot Program is one of the several tools to improve customer service and expedite the issuance of building permits in the development process," and just a comment that I would prefer to have, to say to determine if customer service improvement is needed or warranted to expedite the issuance of building permits in the development process. To say it the first way is to assume that there is a problem, and I don't think there's a current problem right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Carlott?
Yes, I just had a question about the 46, almost $47,000. Where is that, where are those funds coming from? What is the source of those?
You'll be off the hook in just a second.
Jeff will come down and be precise about it, rather than my general answer.
Thank you, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jeff Tyne, Deputy City Manager. The funds are coming from the general fund reserves, and this will be appropriation from that as well. As we looked at the general fund reserves, we do anticipate that there would be one-time money in the upcoming fiscal year because we are seeing revenues this year exceeding the estimate, so we feel that this would be something that is available right now, if that's, obviously, that would mean there's that much less available during the budget process in the upcoming year.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing then, could I have a, this is 25R, Budget Appropriation Transfer Self-Certification Pilot Program, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Rivero. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous, thank you very much. Next is Call to the Public on Non-Agenda Items. We have one speaker, Joan Evans.
Good evening, my name is Joan Evans. I live at 7636 West Lockland Court in Peoria. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. It is my pleasure to be here tonight, and I wish to discuss the P-83 plan that was discussed in study session on Tuesday. That was the first time that I watched something on television. I kind of gave myself a six-month reprieve from all of your hard work and your effort, but I did watch that, and I did have some concerns after watching it and while I was watching it. A big thank you to Councilmember Ames and Councilmember Carlott for their really thoughtful questions, their thoughtful discoveries as we were going through that presentation. I have three things that I want to talk about. The first is demographics. I did some research with the 2010 census report about median household income. Wow, our zip codes within Peoria and also the adjoining Glendale do not come even close to the low numbers that were presented during that time, so I don't know where that information came from, but they really don't match up. After the meeting is over, I have copies of these details for you to see what it was that I looked up. But then I thought, well, you know, I need to compare apples to apples, because they talked about how wonderful Biltmore Fashion Park and Scottsdale Fashion Square are. So I thought, well, I'll look up their demographics, and to be honest, I go to both of those places to shop. Biltmore Fashion Park, 85016, has 42,430 income, 42,830 dollars of income in households, significantly under the number of any area in our zip code. Scottsdale Fashion Square, I thought, well, Scottsdale Fashion Square. I enjoyed Mr. Ames' comments about Biltmore Fashion Square and Scottsdale Fashion Square. So I did the two zip codes that are right there. The 1-85251 goes up to Camelback, is south of Camelback, is 48,000, and the one that is north of Camelback, where Fashion Square actually is, is 64,517, about $200 per year more than what 85382 is, where we're locating our project. Very interesting to me, if we're comparing apples to apples. I didn't use whatever he used, but that's what I had. So I thought, well, what's the difference there? Well, it's probably hotels, because they talked about the hotels, and I thought, well, we do have hotels, and we have nice hotels. And he said, of course, the one coming in is not measurable at all. However, it is measurable. It has a conference center, it has a restaurant, it has a rooftop bar. It is not the same as the others, and it adds variety to the mix. And it also lends visibility. Who on Bell Road or 101 is not going to see that, and the Harkins Center is right there on the 101. So this brings me to my third comment, visibility. Big concern for the businesses right now, that's been like that. I've dealt with this area for eight years, and I am sure that Mr. Ames and Mr. Edwards have run the same thing with the businesses and their concerns about visibility. But what is the developer doing about it? The developer was commissioned by our Economic Development Department to figure out a way to make this happen, and he came up with the idea of signage. And the signage, he has agreed to give 50% profit to the city for the next 40 years to be used to keep that area viable. Man, such a deal, you know, and of course, I know, you probably all know these things, and I hope our two new council members have spent time with the developer to understand this project. It's an amazing project. I, wow, spent countless hours pondering this project. I am confident that the developer will be able to answer all of your concerns. Great things are coming to Peoria. We aren't the stepchild that people in other areas used to think we are, and I think most still think we are. They know we are. Most people know that Peoria is the place to be. Please, build this project. It's a baseball tie-in. Build it, and they will come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have reports from the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. Just two items. First, you have the regular monthly report of the subcommittee items, but most importantly, the second item, we were talking a lot about signature events earlier, both in the park plan update, but also in the special events, and probably our biggest signature event is right around the corner, and I'll turn it over to John.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to announce and invite you all and everybody in earshot, July 4th All-American Festival will be held on July 4th with a bang, and we're really excited to announce and present, it's presented this year by Sears Vacations. If you didn't know, that you could buy some Craftsman's, a pair of shorts, and go on a vacation, Sears can take care of you. Five o'clock this Thursday at the Peoria Sports Complex, the All-American Festival, 4th of July. We've got great entertainment lined up, featuring a country zone with Chad Freeman and the Redline Band. On the Mariners' practice fields, we'll have a rock and roll zone with Duckness Dear Boy, and a reggae zone featuring Latino Rebel Band. And I know something that each of you want to be involved with, the Cornhole Tournament. There's still time to register your team, and cornhole's a lot of fun these days. Come on out, everybody's welcome, for only $5 at the general admission, and great eats, great activities, something for everybody, and a wonderful 20-minute fireworks show. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, it's time for reports from the City Council. We'll start with you, Mr. Leoni. Reports from the City Council?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to add a couple of things. On Saturday, the 22nd, we had a neighborhood meeting, and it turned out real well at the Baptist Church. We had the fire department there, they gave a lot of information out, but the problem was with that one, that they had to leave early, and they let us hang in there. But we survived, and they did a great job. They had to leave, we wasn't going to stop them. I want to thank the fire, the police chief also, for bringing his people down there to inform the people who was on duty at night and days, and how they can, how they can help the city. We had animal control, and we had co-compliance, and it was just a great meeting, and I'm looking forward to having more. I just want to mention that unfortunately- I just want to mention that on 4th of July, I hope you all have a great 4th of July. It's important, and watch out for the fires. I'd like to also add that we had a tragedy in Yaral. This week, we joined the town of Yaral, the state of Arizona, and a county, and a country in mourning the loss of 19 firefighters who were the first response. Our prayers, our thoughts and prayers are with the families of those who lost in the Yaral fire. I have to say that I was glad to hear that our firefighters in Peoria are safe, and all I can say is that, you know, we got to watch out for these fires, we got to protect our people. The firefighters do a great job. I get a lot of respect for them. They're out there protecting the people and the property. God bless each and every one of you. God bless the families who lost the 19 firefighters, and God bless America. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Carlat?
Thank you. And I wanted to echo that. It was such a tragedy and such a horrific event. You know, you just don't know when, when our public safety officials, fire and police, get up in the morning and go off to work if they're going to come back, and their families have to deal with that each and every day. And we see in this situation, it was the worst, just the worst of all cases. So again, our hearts and our thoughts and our prayers go out to those families. It's terrible. And along those lines, that fire was started by, by just an act of God. Now, we are coming up on a chance to work with fireworks. You know, we live in the desert. Let's not play with fireworks. They are illegal in the city of Peoria unless you go to a professionally developed fireworks show, such as the sports complex, or even there's one at the lake, Lake Pleasant, on July 3rd. Go to those if you want to look at fireworks, if you want to have fun on 4th of July. Do not try to do them on your own, in your home, in your cul-de-sac, in your backyard, in the desert. It's not legal, and something terrible can happen. Please. One more thing, I'm lecturing you. We are getting ready to take a summer break, so we won't be back until August. So I just would like to wish all of you a safe and happy and healthy summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo Carlo and Kathy's sentiment to the fallen firefighters, and my prayers go out to their families. And I want to thank Chief Ruiz for sending some firefighters up there to help, and I also hope that they have a speedy return to their families. I also want to address Chief Mentor. I want to single out a couple of your officers, Officer Cusmano and Rodriguez, this last week. And after learning that there was an elderly gentleman that was without air conditioning during these 115, 120-degree heat, they took it upon themselves to contact the local Lowe's over at 83rd and Thunderbird, and were able to work with the manager to get an air conditioning unit donated to that gentleman. I want to applaud those officers for their thoughtfulness, and this is just a great example of Peoria's finest working for the community. So please thank them on my behalf. And to all those, just a happy Thanksgiving, happy 4th of July, not a Thanksgiving, 4th of July, and stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ames?
Yes, my heart, and it's very sad, the 19 that were killed in that Yaral fire out of Prescott. And our city is helping in any way we can with fire and other resources and help, including with Prescott and with Wickenburg to the extent that they need, and our city manager's right on top of that. So that's very good. But it's so sad, those 19 firefighters, elite firefighters, the toughest of the tough, I think, in the fire department, and so sad. And our heart goes out to all of them. There's a 100 Club you can donate money to that goes to help the families of those 19 persons. So it's a firefighters 100 Club. You can look it up on the web, just put 100 Club in there, and it'll give you how you can donate. So if you want, want to help that way, then do that, because I know all of us are, this is national news. I mean, it was the lead story in all of the national networks on television and in the newspaper, USA Today, it was the lead story. So it's very tragic. The last time that many were killed was way back in the 1930s, I believe. So we're all concerned about that, and our prayers go out. I've been working a lot with citizens individually on a lot of their needs, so that's been taking up a lot of my time lately, in addition to our regular council duties. But I did get a chance to go to church, a different church than normally. Here in Old Town, the word church, it's next to Wilhelm, and they had a patriotic day, and it was really outstanding, and battle hymn of the Republican, everything, and a salute to our armed forces, men and women. So it was excellent, and so I enjoyed that. And it's a way of getting involved in the community with our churches, as well as other ways that we get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patena?
Thank you, Mayor. Last Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend the Arizona Muslim Law Enforcement Appreciation Dinner. Several elected officials, along with a number of organizations, attended from all over the valley. Chief Mentor and Assistant Chief Sanders and myself were proud to represent Peoria. There were several speakers that covered a number of issues from combating terrorism, profiling, the holy month of Ramadan. It was a really interesting evening, and I hope to attend next year. A few days ago, I also received an email about Peoria police helping out a senior citizen whose air conditioning had broken down during our current heat wave. As a former city employee dealing with grants, federal grants, I came across these situations many times. It's devastating, and it could be, it could be life-threatening when an elderly person goes without air conditioning when it's 118 degrees outside. Doesn't take long for the house inside to become a death trap. And so for these officers to go out and make sure that this elderly man had an air conditioner was quite beyond their call of duty. However, I find that this is not the exception in Peoria. This is the norm. We have the bike rodeo, we have holiday toy giveaways, we have federal grants to assist Peoria residents, or whatever their need might be. And once again, these are, this is at least one of the reasons that makes Peoria such a great city to live in. And last, my heartfelt condolences also go out to the families and friends of the firefighters that lost their lives in Yaral. Such a tragedy that no words can describe, and the loss and the emptiness that we feel in our hearts. Because these men and women are so good and so well-trained at what we do, we just assume that they go in, attack the fire, get it under control, put it out, and then move on. And we forget just how dangerous this can really be. And please also remember the 500 additional firefighters that are still out there fighting this blaze that is 0% contained. It seems lately that our flags have been at half-mast far too often, and I hope that this changes very soon. My thoughts and prayers go out to everyone who have been touched by this horrific event, and I hope you all keep them in your prayers.
Mr. Verro?
I won't repeat everything my colleagues have said, but my thoughts and prayers are with the families of these firefighters. Thank you.
Thank you. Last week, I was allowed to be the welcoming, do the welcome ceremony to a group of Nogales and Nora Economic Development folks who came up to the valley. They came up to do a tour of all the kinds of incubators that are going on in the various cities around the valley. And we were the last one, and they were very impressed with BioInspire because it's narrowly focused, it's already successful. We've had two $250,000 grants given to some of the BioInspire companies, and they've only been operating for like seven months. So we're doing extremely well. A lot of the other ones, you know, they open up to all kinds of businesses, and they're incubators for other cities. They'll take anybody that comes up, and I guess their theory is, throw enough mud against the wall, sooner or later something will stick. Ours doesn't work that way. So we're doing an excellent job out there, and it's something to be extremely proud of. Like everyone else, my heart was really sad to hear about the firefighters. And it seems incredible that we can lose so many so fast. So my prayers go out to them. I hope yours do as well. And finally, this is it. We're not going, we're not going to help you again until the end of August. And that in itself is worth a celebration. So with that, we're adjourned.